I'm, oh.
Howdy.
I've got six o'clock. I'm, um, it's like most everybody's here that I can tell. Maybe not. I don't see Zach, I guess, yet, but. Why don't we get started? Let's see, do we have any non-arranged participation? I'm looking over here at the participant window.
I don't see any.
I don't see any either. Justin, I'll turn it over to you to, uh, start off our review. You can file the agenda or just explain what's in the packet, how do you want to go about leading this off? Okay?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, we can just go in order of the, uh, the agenda. So I did make some, uh, minor edits to the, um, draft general fund budget. I also provided some, um, additional information. I tried to break out the memo, with dates so that way you knew what was updated and what was a holdover from last meeting. And so the major informational updates are on page four and five. And so, you know, it just includes, the potential addition of a $50,000 transfer from, uh, general fund to the equipment replacement fund. Denoting the, um, savings in the current fiscal year from the, the county sheriff's office that, that they received for, for COVID relief. And I, as, as Paul had requested at the, at the last meeting, um, I was able to, find some information on salary comparison for, uh, city council. And fortunately I had access to, uh, the MML, um, wage study, to, to get that information. Um, I don't know if anybody had, has any questions or has anything that they want to talk about in, in the general fund?
We, um, I mean, we'd worked our way through most of it, right? Last time?
Yeah, although, um, you know, I know that it was a quick turnaround, uh, between receiving the packet and, uh, the review. So I thought there might be.
Right. I know one conversation, one conversation we weren't able to have, I think, was sort of staffing concerns, staffing needs and concerns. And I don't know, if that normally falls under the city manager department or where that falls in the budget. If, if we wanted to have an abbreviated conversation about that, I think we were originally going to have a separate work session on that. I get, I don't know where that landed and how that might affect the budget, if at all.
Yeah. So, um, the, the, the intent was to, was to do a separate work session. And I think it just kind of got overwhelmed with all of the other meetings that, that we've been having. And we didn't want to burn anybody out.
I think I went on vacation on you too. I think it was supposed to have been when I went to Florida.
If I go outside now, that's a great place to take a meeting.
Yeah, I have a covered porch. So I'm on that old farmhouse.
And then it looks like you're getting good internet reception out there too.
Well, the wifi is right there. On the side of the window.
Um, so, so as far as staffing goes, it, if we were to add people, it depends on where they are and what their function is. So, um, in, in, in my opinion, and you know, Dan, Marie, um, you know, correct me. The, the kind of biggest need that, that I see coming up is likely with DPW. Yeah, we've, we've added a lot of new stuff. And.
I mute.
Big dog.
You know, so we, we've, we've had for DPW employee, employees for quite a while and we've added a lot of, of new, right? We, we've added, the trails, we've added Mill Creek, Mill Creek Park, um, in the last.
Downtown.
You know, the, yeah, the maintenance of downtown. Um, there's, there's always a lot going on that requires, someone in the field to go out and address. And, you know, if we were to add someone, you know, for example, to, to the DPW, um, it would have a, a budget impact in, in a couple of different departments, um, likely, parks, um, DPW, uh, downtown maintenance, uh, streets. So, um, you know, adding one employee to DPW, um, that, that salary gets, gets spread between, not, not only different departments within the general fund, but different funds.
Local.
Yeah, well, um, streets. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I was just gonna say local streets, major streets. Can I add a little bit?
Sure.
Justin's correct. We've added a lot, a lot, a lot more things. And over the years, I remember Zach asking me, you know, when's, when do you need more people? When do you need more people? I'm not saying we need more people today, but we, as a, as a group, we need to come together, look at all the stuff that we're adding. You know, just the, the social, um, districts that we're putting in with, uh, you know, the barrels of water and, you know, the, the new trails, the extra snow clearing. And it, it's coming to a time that we really need to come together as a team and figure out, you know, uh, how we can better utilize. We're also, we, we get a couple of summer help and sometimes I, I, I don't feel very comfortable on sometimes what we have them summer help do. And I think that, uh, one more employee right now would, would be a huge benefit. As we went through the COVID like everybody else, when you put two employees, when you break it down to two employees or four employees like we have now and like perched out for four weeks, that leaves us three DPW workers. These guys are up and running at seven, work till 3:30. I don't think anybody would, you know, dispute that. There's just a lot of stuff that goes on during the day. And there's the phone calls that are constantly coming in with things that we've got to address. So another person or two people would be ben, very beneficial, to securing what we do, the services that we provide for the city on a day to day basis.
Um, but that, that also kind of leads into, into another topic of conversation, which is, um, you know, specifically on, on you, Dan. You know, Dan's going to be eligible to retire here coming up shortly. And I think, you know, we as, as a city, and I know Dan's been thinking about this a lot, but you know, planning for, for his retirement and what, what water and sewer and DPW look like and, you know, who's, who is going to, you know, be stepping up, to help out those departments. Um, and I, I know you have some thoughts on that, Dan. Um, I don't know if you wanted to, to share those now or?
I do. I'm not really sure when that time, well, when the time comes and I do take that, that step that I want to retire. I've talked to Sean's asked me about it and I would like to give you a four to six months notice. I believe that we have, we have an employee that can step into my place and do a really good job. How that process has worked out, obviously that's up to council. That isn't up to me. I have a recommendation. But when that, I'm not, I don't know when that time is right now, but I can guarantee you that I'll give you four to six months with that process to make it as painless as possible.
And, and, and to, to kind of build on that, I, I, I had, um, I've, I've been thinking about this quite a bit. And, um, one thing that I think that, you know, it, it might be prudent to do is, at, at one point we had an assistant, um, public utility superintendent, that, that didn't work out because of the, the, the person that, that was appointed to, to that role. But I, I don't think that, that is necessarily a bad route to go is to, to potentially appoint someone as, as Dan's assistant. So that way Dan can spend some, some additional time with that person. Get that person trained up and, and ready to, to, to step in. But that, that also has, has some impacts too. Specifically to the, the water and wastewater, uh, rotation schedule. And, um, you know, Danny, right? Talk about this, but you know, better than I can, but, um, you know, we, we have, we have a certain number of employees and they're on a rotation to, to work the weekends. And if you pull one person out, out of that rotation to, um, make them the assistant, that, that, that throws off that, that schedule and that rotation.
We have six people currently working at the water and wastewater treatment plant. Um, each, each employee has to work a weekend on a floating schedule. They get Monday or Tuesday off and then then two employees work a half day together Saturday and a half day together Sunday. So to promote somebody to the assistant to me, um, I would guess would be a salary position. I don't know. But that would pull, if that is a salary position, I don't know if it's appropriate for them to be working weekends. That would be something that we'd have to have a discussion on and figure out how it works through that. If that is the way, council would like to proceed. I don't think it's a bad idea to have somebody as my assistant to go through the day-to-day stuff, but without having that extra employee with the amount of work and the effort that we put in, I don't think he'd get the full grasp of everything that's going on on a day-to-day basis, being pulled away to do an operator's job.
You kind of have them shadow you then, Dan?
Well, I guess we need to talk about it. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we'd be, we'd be working together on the.
I'm just, no, I'm just asking to get it in my head.
We'd be working together on budgets. We'd be working together on, you know, how we're going to organize the water, wastewater and DPW, the projects that are upcoming, road projects or, uh, all of the demands that Eagle's putting on us, uh, with lead and topper and galvanized lines. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. I try to, I try to spread that information to my department heads as we go through, because I found that quite valuable for other people to be looking at stuff. But not somebody that's alongside me overseeing all of the programs. That's not happening. If that's what you guys would like.
And, and, and so to, you know, I, keeping that in mind, um, you know, the, the kind of continuation of the thought that I had was, you know, maybe at, at some point coming up, we, you know, look at appointing an assistant. And then if one option could be to hire someone in the water wastewater department with the understanding that that person will also be cross-trained. And will spend, you know, a, a, a good number of hours Monday through Friday, um, working with, with the DPW.
Yeah, Justin, I, you know, I think that, um, council is receptive to seeing, you know, what that org chart might look like, you know, put, put that out there with that box, whatever you want to call that, that assistant box maybe. And then, um, I was, you answered my question, which was going to be if you had to hire somebody, where would you, which department would you hire them if you pulled somebody up? Based upon what Dan said, it sounds like somebody in water and sewer would be coming up without letting the cat out of the bag. But, um, that's, that's, that's what was my read of what he said. And therefore, therefore you need somebody to replace that body and that makes sense. So if, if that's the case. You know, I, I, the other observation is, uh, the budget, the, the draft budget that you put together for the, at least the next two fiscal years was showing some room. You know, you didn't have all of the revenues spent. So if that person was spending time across multiple departments, at least the general fund could support some portion of those salaries. Or that salary.
Right.
We haven't, we haven't seen water and sewer and streets yet, but I mean, we, we do have the street fund information in the, in the packet, but I, I think if you, if you continue to look at that as you go forward, that's, um, I'm, I think that's a, a good start. Well, one of the benefits to having an assistant for me, and I would think for council would be able to give you an overview of what, what that next person is going to look like. And you've always got that person that's got the working knowledge of the city. The dedication that it, it takes to do my job. This person has that dedication. But if there's something that you guys see as, as we went through this process, that you wanted to keep them an assistant. I mean, you still got the process, you know, you could interview, you know, maybe there's something else that Dan Schloss and this other person is not providing that you guys want to see. As council members. But you still got to have somebody there that's going to rally the troops, that knows what's going on every, on day-to-day basis. They know all these individual jobs. At least this is important to me. And I think that's what makes me a good manager over all of these employees that we have is I know what they do every day. I know what the restraints are. I know how tough it is or isn't, how much time it's going to take. And I think that's important to be a manager over the water, wastewater and DPWs. You've got to have a working knowledge of what goes on every day. Well, you, you even pinched it over the COVID period, didn't you? I did. I worked. I mean, that's one of the benefits of, of Dan Schloss. I mean, I've done every job there is to do from DPW to water to wastewater. And we needed somebody and that was me. Um, it's nothing that I don't think on a day-to-day basis that all of your staff doesn't do. I mean, the cross-training, you remember Sean, when I accepted the position, one of the things council wanted was a cross-training. We're getting to the point, we're cross-trained out. I mean, we got DPW guys with water licenses. We got DPW guys down at the water and wastewater plant. They can still plow snow, still do the day-to-day operations, but the operations are getting larger now. You know, we, we need, and the cross-training can go on and it's just, I can only speak to the water wastewater and DPW, but the, these burning pains are going on up in the office too. I think that we're, we're getting made aware of all of us. So in the next two to five years, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make some adjustments on what we're doing if we want to keep providing the service. And I think that we do an excellent job of serving our residents and our business owner on a day-to-day basis. I mean, to compare to a lot of other utilities that are out there, um, they can't compare to the service that we, we give them, I don't think, on a day-to-day basis.
So, so, um, you know, with, with, with that being kind of in, in my mind, the, the number one priority. Number two priority is, is addressing another, you know, three to five-year potential retirement. And so, sorry to, to, to point at you, Marie.
Me and the dogs that bark in meetings.
But, you know, right now Marie is wearing, you know, three hats plus. And, you know, right now I'm, I'm the only person with clerk certifications or, or election certifications in the office. Marie, Marie and I both have assessing certifications, but she's, she's the, the primary and, and the person who does all of the assessing work in the office.
Justin's just there if I get hit by a bus.
Nice. But I, I, I think, you know, number two is, is bringing somebody in to be able to kind of fill those gaps and, and start to train somebody in, in, in those areas that, that can help out, you know, when, when the day comes that, that Marie decides that, that she wants to retire.
And Justin and I have spoke at some length on this and my, my future retirement, it really in a lot of ways, it depends on what happens with the manager and the assistant manager position as how you kind of meld the clerk, the manager, the assistant manager, the treasurer, the finance director, the HR, the payroll. The assessing is a, is a different animal altogether. Um, and that's something that we're going to have to work through. I think, Justin, you agree on how really those are going to be structured once I get close to retirement. I'm at, right now I'll tell council, I'm leaning towards, and I mean, this is years out, so I can't, there's no guarantees, of course. But, um, just staying on as assessor to finish my six-year plan, which won't be done by then. So I would be around, you know, obviously to help anybody that would step in to the treasurer finance role. But there are the other things that I do that aren't necessarily treasurer finance. As I mentioned, you know, there's an HR aspect to some of the things I do. There's the payroll that I do. Um, fortunately Mike has taken over the IT part of what I used to do. So yeah, there's a lot and, and, you know, with Justin wearing, as, as the assistant wearing the, the Parks and Rec and the ACH and the clerk. Yeah. There's a lot of ways we could go, right, Justin?
Absolutely. But, you know, I think, I think ultimately in order to, to have another body.
Be nice.
It, well, it, it would be nice, but we also have, have a, have to have a place to put them.
Marie, would you kind of look at it as an assistant to you? Or I guess it would all depend on how you merge all this together. But if you did bring somebody in to support you, would you have that be an assistant or how would you?
Well, one of the things that Justin and I kind of kicked around would be the idea of a deputy clerk treasurer. That would be able to fill in some of the election duties and do some of the, you know, the treasurer side of things. Um, that's an option. Um, it just, I don't know at this point. I, I don't know, um, Justin, what do you, I mean, I don't know at this point, if you would look at that position as a, a permanent kind of clerk treasurer, if that person would be a part-time person. Um, or if you would look at that person as to somebody that could be trained up and step into that role. I don't really know what that would look like.
My pressure, I just was.
No, no, no. It's things, it's things that we've talked about and things that you kicked around. Cause I mean, whoever replaces me, Donna, I, I think the, the finance days of where somebody like me could step in, my, for those that, you that don't know, my master's degree is in public administration. It's not in finance. And it has gotten so technical over the last, especially the last 15 years with Gatsby. You really need a CPA. I, I, I really truly think you need CPA as a finance director for the next one. Um, so that's generally not going to be the kind of person that you're going to hire in as a deputy clerk treasurer.
I see what you're.
Right. But you could, I mean, you, you could structure it so that the finance director, um, is more of an oversight over the treasurer instead of the, because when, when we were a village, the treasurer was an official. Yeah, I, I, there's a lot of ways it could be structured or that a treasurer could have a CPA and oversee finance. There's just, there's a lot of options.
Thank you.
It really is.
But, um, okay, kind of, kind of going back to your question, Jamie, if, if, if a position like that were to be created, um, that would hit exclusively the general fund.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it sounds like there's lots to consider and I appreciate that. There's a lot of thought that's gone into it. And I could understand how some of it hinges on the, you know, eventual decision about the city manager. I do, I mean, I, there, I hear, and we've been hearing for a while, the growing pains in a variety of departments. And I am just trying to get a sense of what do we have room for in the budget? Because I don't, it doesn't, you don't want to keep waiting. And it seems like we have room for some things. And so that's good news. Um, you know, one thing that came up, was the idea of sort of a communications director too, but that's, you know, brand new. That's not even helping to alleviate just the current strain. So that's, you know, something total, totally extra. Um, you know.
And, 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 you know, for, for communication, I mean, you know, there's, there, there are alternatives to hiring someone on as like a full-time position. You know, we, we've, we've, you know, been contacted by folks, you know, giving us, who want to give us proposals all, all the time for, you know, various services. One of the ones that, that we have received in the past, and it, it hasn't been a recent thing, but, um, uh, almost like, like a communications coordinator service, that can do things like publications and, you know, variety of stuff. The, the, the challenge, I think with, with any position or, or, um, company that you hire like that is, you know, they, they have to have a feel for the services that we provide. Because when you communicate, you know, a lot of times you do have to provide, you know, detailed technical information in a, in a digestible way.
Justin, that's also, that type of work could also be taken up by an assistant city manager, right?
Correct.
But would depend on who ends up in that position.
Correct.
I think that's one question I had too. I mean, it sounds like, I'm, I'm getting the sense that there are a lot of different ways it could be done. I don't know if you have a sense of, because you know, your former role was assistant manager slash clerk. Is that something that it seems like needs to be, do we need kind of like, you know, we would maybe have an assistant DPW superintendent? Would we need just a separate standalone assistant manager that's not wearing multiple hats and the clerk gets absorbed somewhere else? Or is that where the expansion needs to happen? Or is it more in the finance side or?
Well, and, and, you know, and again, I think, I think it depends on, on who, who sits in the, in the assistant chair. If we, you know, do have someone who, is finance-minded, who, 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 you know, has, you know, a, a background in budgeting and, and, um, general ledger, you know, true, true finance. That person could, could, could assist Marie in, in a variety of tasks.
And, and, and Jamie, one of the things that, that happened, so when, when I took over assessing, um, two things. Number one, I did not realize what a humongous job it really is to do it correctly. Because we were basing it off us having a contractor, we only saw one day a week. We really didn't know what he did outside of the office, you know, to, to service the city. So that was a much bigger role than, than we anticipated. And the other thing that was happening is that the former city manager had an affinity for finance. And so when I got buried in assessing, she took over my bank recs and my tax deposits and all that kind of side of things. And when with her leaving at the time that she left was, um, probably the worst possible time for, for me, for that to happen. Um, so that assistant manager job or it, it, there's just so many ways it can be, it's just, it's, it's almost like I just have this much, too much to do. Yeah. As much, you know, that could be filled with, it, it just, it's just, how do you fill it is the, it's the big question.
And trust your judgment. You'll tell us.
Yeah. So from a budget standpoint, that's something we could be examining in greater detail this fiscal year with room to do something about it.
I think so.
Yeah. That's helpful. That's good. And I appreciate all those details.
Well, and, and, and I think that this is a, a good conversation, conversation to have, um, and, and an important one. And, you know, one, one that I've, I've wanted to have for, for a while is just, you know, between all, all of the other meetings and where's, where's the time?
Right.
I don't know if there's any, any other areas that council wanted to talk about in the general fund as it's presented?
The general fund, that's where we called out our allocation to the senior center, right? Is that where that comes out of?
Correct. Yep. So that is.
Maybe you don't even know where. I just wanted to acknowledge, I don't know if we just, just to say, hey, you know, they came and spoke to us. We said, yeah, we think we can find room and we found room. And so that's in there.
Yeah. Page, page 16, um, department eight, seven, five, uh, contributions.
Okay. Have we communicated that back to them or is that something, once we finalize the budget, they are alerted or?
Um, yeah, well, I, I wanted to make sure that the council was, was comfortable with, with that inclusion before, you know, notifying the senior center.
Right. Yeah, I was happy to see that. I mean, in terms of the, the pay, the council member pay, I've only started looking into this. And, you know, could be a part of a separate discussion. I, I just looked at the number of meetings, uh, Chelsea has, Celine has, and then what we have. And as best as I can tell, Chelsea needs only the first and third Mondays of the month. And I looked back through 2018 and they have never, I, I see no separate meeting beyond the two meetings a month. So I see that they're having consistently 23 meetings a year. They skip maybe their second meeting in December. So I don't know if that means they're having work sessions that aren't posted or their work sessions are always absorbed into their standard meetings. Celine had some variability. You know, they've had eight meetings to date this year, according to their, uh, website. We've had 17. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to have work sessions and to have more, you know, informal dialogues, I guess. That's maybe something to consider is, is the way we're doing it meeting-wise. Is it the best use of everyone's time in terms of the number of agendas and packets that are prepared? Historically, have you done more work sessions that immediately precede a council meeting? So it's still just that two nights a month versus four nights a month. Something to consider, but I don't think it affects the budget necessarily.
Jamie, it, this, um, this sort of takes on a personality of the people that form the council, I think. You know, and, and, um, you know, it's funny, I, I, I work with other municipalities as part of my day job. And if, if I went to like, some of the other meetings, their meetings are literally thirty-five minutes long. Okay, they, they, they're, they're, they start at seven, and if they hit seven forty-five, they're all, wow, that was a long meeting. We, we, we don't, we, we have a much more, uh, there's much more discussion and open sharing of information that's in our current uh, profile, if you will, or makeup relative to the, the meetings that we have, our, our regular meetings. A lot of communities, you know, will ask their, their staff to prepare a written report, but they don't say anything at the meeting. Uh, personally, I get a lot of value out of hearing the staff members talk to us and explain the day-to-day, the issues. I think, I think there's value in that. You know, in terms of the workshops, I will admit that I wanted to have as many as we could, uh, since the election, because, you know, two new council members, that makes up a big percentage, it's almost thirty percent of the council that um, is new, and we, we needed to get to know each other a little bit, and I don't know how to do that without interacting, especially in this, this day and age where it's hard to meet in person. I still, I still remember a while telling me how nice it was just to say hi to Julie Knight in person when we toured the building. I mean, if that building hadn't come up. Um, you know, that building came up, and we all got to see each other walk around together, you know, a little bit. So, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, I think that, you know, this year that we've, we've probably had a lot of different meetings on purpose. The first half of the year is always a busier season than the, than, let me say, the first half of the calendar year, the second half of the fiscal year is always a bigger, there's always more meeting, it's more intense than, than after July one. For whatever reason, we get through this budget cycle, and then typically, it's a little, it's a little less intense.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we've been averaging about thirty-two-ish meetings per year total. Um, and then typically we'll do, uh, two budget work sessions and one or two goal-setting sessions. Now, obviously, you know, the, the, this, this year so far, we've, we've exceeded that a little bit. You know, on, on, on a variety of different topics, not just, goal-setting and, and budget, but, um.
But I, but I think it's healthy. I mean, I, you know, I, when you look at the, you know, the, the state of the community, so to speak. You know, people know what's going on, you know, our staff are engaged, they, 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 they put in a lot of time. Maybe, I don't know, maybe that needs to be looked at if it's too much time, I guess, but, you know, I think that, uh, the, the process, whatever it is, I think leads to good results, or has led to good results, and um, I hope that we can continue meeting as we need to, you know, like, you know, this meeting tonight, if, I was hoping that Zach would be here in case he had any questions on the general fund budget. You know, if, if, if we went through it thoroughly enough last time, you know, that we can, you know, jump down the streets, we can just do that, or jump to the Broad Street information. We don't have to stay on any one issue if people are comfortable with where it's at. You know, we, we won't officially be adopting this until June. So it's gonna be, it'll be in the other, the next work session packets, or, well, you don't have to put, you know, it's out there to be talked about at any work session we have on the budget. It can be brought up at any time. So, you know, our, our next, our next workshop is scheduled for May twelfth. You know, I, I, we skipped a week in the middle there, not last week or next week, we skipped one week. I don't know that if anybody wants to add a meeting, I don't know that it's necessary to do that. I do think we need to talk a little bit about the Broad Street stuff, you know, that, that has added a whole element to this budget planning session or cycle, because, you know, we're actively looking at a building. You know, which is also important, so, Justin, why don't you take us through that item a little bit?
Sean, I have a comment. I, I hope, I hope we don't think that because we do it this way, and another community does it another way and doesn't have as many meetings or as long a meetings, that they somehow are running their operation poorer than we could, or better.
I don't think that either. Well, that's what they, that's how they've chosen to do it, is what I'm saying.
That's the point. Well, when we say that we have an opportunity to, 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 uh, do this, we, we have to realize that there are different ways that people do it, and that's, that's what, that's the point I wanted to make, okay? Maybe we should try it sometime, see if it works. I don't know, may, may not. But, uh, we've done it this way for a long time. So I'm sure we're going to continue to do it this way. Uh, but it's, it's not necessarily the only way that we do it, and when I compare some of these others, you know, units of government, uh, you know, some of them are farm communities, a lot of them are farm communities. Not all of them, but a good number of them. And, uh, so I'm not sure that they have the same thoughts and objectives. I know, like you said, there are people that at council meetings, I, in various units of government close to, close to here that, particularly one up to the northwest, and I said, after the meeting got passed eight-thirty, that, 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 that was over. You know, that meeting was done, and they only started at seven. Now, they didn't start at six like we do. So, you know, there's different ways to do different things, and so I was just trying to make sure that, because we have do it this way, that's a good way, or it's the only way, it's just the way that we do it.
Well said. Uh, Dan, do you have your head up?
Yes, I do.
Oh, sorry, I just saw it.
I just want to, I, I guess I, with the meetings that we have and the length of the meetings that we have, we have done a lot of great stuff in this city in over the past, past twenty years. I don't know, with your experience, Sean, with other communities, you know, have they not had the money to do the stuff that we've done with improvements in the cities? I mean, could that be part of maybe why the meetings don't last as long? Because I don't see, there's got to be a reason for that, and, and I know that over the past fifteen, twenty years, we've done so many improvements to the city. It's taken all of us to work together to get a lot of this stuff done, with water, wastewater, roads. Maybe that contributes to how involved we all are as, as a team together to provide these, these services and these different things. Maybe that plays into why our meetings are a little bit longer than maybe other communities, I don't know.
Well, I, I don't know, um, I don't know what the perfect recipe is. I know about thirteen years ago, and, uh, when I stepped in after Jim Cedar resigned, I took a question from somebody in the audience that was at the meeting, and it was during the meeting, it was not in the non-arranged participation part. And there were a couple of people on council at the time that looked at me like, what are you doing? And I think my response at that time was, well, hey, if this person took the time to come to the meeting, and they wanted to say something, isn't, aren't we here to listen to them, you know, so to speak? And it probably isn't or wasn't Robert's Rules protocol or perfect running a meeting protocol, but I think we're, we, we're a pretty open environment, and I'm, I'm in favor of that. Now, that, that doesn't mean that everybody should be able to speak on every topic every time. I try to defer to the council members, but I, I, I do think that we as council members could be conscious of the length of time we take on certain things, but at the same time, if it needs to be discussed, it needs to be discussed. One of the things we've tried to do to move some things along is, you know, we have a rule that says anything over five thousand needs to have a council approval for the purchase. That's in our purchasing policy, I think, somewhere. And, um, you know, therefore, those items, even if we've put them in the budget, we bring them back in front of council to be voted on as an agenda item to, for confirmation, okay? We, we, we leave the budget as a tool, not as an absolute. You know, there are other ways of doing it. You could, you could argue over a hard approval of the budget on something, and if it's in the budget, staff has permission to spend it. Okay, now, we don't tend to do that. We, we work together to get the budget in a good spot, and then staff does, does its job to, to bring back the items that they've identified that we need to spend money on, and then, you know, we approve them. I, Courtney and I started, and Justin is continuing, we, we're starting to put a few things on the consent agenda whenever we can. A little more, you'll notice the consent agenda's been a little fuller over the last year or so. Just if it's something that we didn't think was objectionable, we're putting it there so that, you know, instead of having it on the, on the agenda for a straight discussion. Um, anything can always be pulled off the consent agenda. That's in the, in our agenda rules there, so.
There, there, there's actually some, some communities that literally put everything on the consent agenda as a part of the initial agenda.
Right.
And then it's up to council members to pull off what they want. And then anything that doesn't get pulled off is just approved.
Yeah, so there, there's different ways of doing it, and I, I, I agree with Paul. I don't think necessarily ours is better or worse. I think it works for us. Anyway, it's interesting to think about.
I'm going to that training this weekend, and so, I mean, I know what I've been exposed to here, and, you know, you guys obviously have been doing this a lot longer than I have, so I'm looking forward to you, learning from MML and, you know, different perspectives of other people and different forms of government, and I'm more than happy to bring back anything that seems interesting or helpful.
Best part of that meeting, Jamie, may be when you sit down at lunch with people and talk to them about their community, and the same things that we're talking about here. Because most people are very willing to share what they think about their community and how they deal with it, so I found that on some of the early ones that I went to.
And I think they do, they did have like a, so it's all Zoom, but they did have a virtual breakout room in that first one we did, so I'm hoping they'll have something similar.
Okay, Justin, what's next, sir?
Well, uh, next on the agenda is thirty-five fifteen broad. Since our last meeting, uh, which was Monday, we had, uh, we had a meeting with your appraiser onsite yesterday. Um, and so they're, they're getting to work on that. And then I know you, Sean, were able to be onsite today. Me with Jeff Evans, and I, I believe Tom was there, um, the, one of the, the property owners.
Yeah, yeah, they, um, Justin worked from home today so that, uh, staff could facilitate, uh, bringing in the other two um, city manager candidates to interact with staff, and, um, Jeff Evans had, and Tom from Med Hub, former property owner, or current property owner, I guess, wanted to know what furniture we wanted to, or we were necessarily interested in, in potentially keeping if we purchased the building. They were looking to clean out a lot of the older crap that we may have no interest in. So, um, I put Justin on speakerphone, and we walked around the building and put a few pieces of tape on anything that was in good condition, if it was office furniture, and anything that was just old wood boards or couches that were aged, you know, that kind of stuff. I told them we weren't interested in having that part of anything, so that took place today.
And then, um, I've also, um, updated the draft of the request of, for information um, out to community groups, and my goal is to put that out tomorrow. As far as the actual budget, I know, Jamie, you had requested, um, some information from previous packets. Um, and so I've, I've, we're able to, to pull that together, um, and, and include that in this packet.
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah, and, um, I was also able to include, uh, the information that we received from Partners in Architecture regarding, um, the priority one, priority two, and priority three items for the building. And, um, I, I have modified this a little bit to, to send over to Jeff Evans and, um, uh, the, the property owners. That way they can take a look and see, um, what items they would be comfortable with. Making those improvements outright, or which ones we have to, have to talk about a little bit more. Um, but you can see that, uh, at the bottom of page, or halfway through page forty-eight, are the, the total estimated costs for, kind of ca- capital needs for the, the main building. Um, with priority one, the red being kind of the most urgent. Priority two being two to five years out, and blue being, um, desirable at some point. I, I would anticipate that, that there are probably a good number of the red items, those priority one items, that, um, Jeff Evans and the property owner are going to want to work to take care of, because no matter who they sell it to, those items are probably going to need to get taken care of. But so, kind of how, how that, how that factors into the budget. Um, in the last draft of, um, the thirty-five fifteen budget, which starts on page thirty, I had included a kind of placeholder capital project in, uh, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and I, I've moved that over to, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. Actually, sorry, uh, twenty, twenty-one, um, to go along with the other funds that would go into, uh, the cap, the capital improvement fund, or the special projects fund. And I think at, at, at this point, kind of based on the numbers that, um, David's provided, at least those priority one items, um, almost all of those would, I mean, if, if not all, would be able to be taken care of with a, with a four hundred thousand dollar transfer from general fund into that capital improvements fund. Um, along with the, the two-point-five million-dollar bond. And you can see that on, on page forty-three.
Forty, forty-three, you said?
Yep, page forty-three of the packet.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm seeing it. And, and we, I'm just going to ask a question. We have four hundred thousand in cash that could be used without disrupting anything we just saw.
I believe so, yes.
I, I did ask Marie that question before, before showing it. So.
One issue that came up in the past was just maybe the cost of exterior maintenance, or just that it's a, I don't know what the exterior material is, but it's not brick, it's maybe just wood. Yeah, is there, is that, is somebody giving us an estimate of what just the cost of maintaining a structure that that material is, or is that somewhere?
So, so he did include that as let's see, a priority one item for, for immediate maintenance, for, for, you know, replacing those boards that need to be replaced. And that is, uh, page forty-six of the packet, under building exterior. BE one-point-oh-eight. And so he's showing about thirteen thousand dollars in, costs associated with kind of replacing that siding that is damaged and deteriorating. Um, and, and making those improvements immediately.
Justin, you have that mark, that's marked as owner repair item? Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's what I saw.
So, so sorry, sorry, say that again?
It does say owner repair item on it, right?
It, 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 it is listed as, as an owner repair item, so, so that's one of the items that, that we, that we're going to send over to, to Jeff and, and the property owner. Um, to see if, if that's something that they're willing to, to take care of.
Just wanted to make sure. I'm trying to read it off this tiny, I printed it.
Yeah, so, yeah, it, it, they came out a little bit smaller on paper than, than I had anticipated.
The, the, the thought, the thought I think from the property owner is that, um, like when I was there today, I pointed out that the railing, the hand railing on the stairs that we, we, most of us walked up is loose from the concrete. There isn't going to be one building inspection from whether it's us or anybody else that isn't going to flag that as a problem. There isn't gonna be one building inspection from whether it's us or anybody else that isn't gonna flag that as a problem. So some of those things, I think they think that while they have time and it's good weather, they might be able to take care of them. When I was talking to Tom and Jeff today, they acknowledged they knew that Justin had said he was gonna be sending over a, you know, a list at some point this week and, so that, you know, they're expecting it. I mean, I, I would expect that they're gonna go through it and figure out what they think they can handle and which ones they think they can't handle and, obviously they've been through this game before, but you know, what we're, what we're doing is prepping them for the fact that it's, it's, it's not a perfect building. So, you know, there might be, whether that, means there's a discussion on purchase price or a discussion on, they have to do certain things bef, you know, if we ultimately decided. Anyway, we're, we're going down that path in a logical fashion. Since the building inspection is done, we might as well share some of the information.
Yeah, and, and, and there are, uh, a number of items that have, um, owner repair, uh, next to them. Which I, I think, I think is just partners notation that they would expect that to be, taken care of prior to, to our acquisition of it.
Like, like the, like just above that, on, under the, uh, the roof conditions. There's, you know, there's something up there that, that the south metal roof fasteners have pulled out. You can see that from the, the, the second story of the three hundred wing. If you look out the window, you can visibly see those bolts, or, or that are, have popped out or have come out. I showed those to Tom today and he was like, oh wow, you know, so. The thought being if they, if they wanna take care of it, it's all the better, right? So this is pretty thorough, you know, what they provided. I mean, I'm, I'm pleased with what they've, they've put together.
And, and, and that they've broken it out into kind of immediate two to five years and, you know, five plus. I, 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 I think we, we can all appreciate that from a, from a budgeting perspective as well.
Yeah.
One question on the rendering. I don't know that necessarily impacts the budget, so maybe now is not the time to talk about it. I think, I know for sure I'm looking at page fifty-five. And, like fifty-seven, it's kind of a random question. So just, oh, and maybe fifty-eight. So sort of like the council chambers, the, the proposed council chambers, having the restrooms to the, to the rear of that. And I know we, cause then it kind of goes into that. So it's unit two, right? And then unit one is beyond for the offices. And they may be having a hard time piecing it together, but there are kind of two sets of, bathrooms kind of close to each other. One sort of proposed at the rear of the council chambers and the one kind of into the other area. Are we talking about, and then I kind of see, sort of this vestibule, cause were we talking about people being able to come into the council chambers? But then making sure they can't access unit one or one hundred, I guess it is. Is that illustrated here somewhere?
It's on page fifty-five where it says, to the far left, it says vest and then agenda table. I believe that would be the separate entrance from, one hundred into, into council, into two hundred.
Then there's another door just beneath that where you could then go into and then you see restrooms there, but that is sort of the door that would be closed off.
And that, that would likely be locked, uh, in the evenings.
Right. So the, the only thing that struck me, and this is really random, is having, bathrooms right in the rear of the council chambers. Like I'm just remembering the senior center. It was sort of contained and then the restrooms were in the hallway. So restrooms not being in a hallway just strikes me as kind of strange. And if it's like a privacy thing, I mean, obviously they're enclosed, but I don't know, you know, when I walk through there, I'm like, oh, that's interesting. If somebody can feel comfortable getting up in a meeting and then going using the restrooms, right?
Oh, where, where, so, so like the, you know, you're, you're sitting at the council table and you can see somebody going into the restroom.
Right, right. Just, I don't know, maybe it says more bummy. The building, I don't know. It, it just struck me maybe because usually you see bathrooms and hallways, I guess, not like in the actual meeting room. But I didn't know what, like what else you could do different about the space.
Bathrooms look like they're in a hallway to meet personally. I mean, there's a hallway.
And they're in. Yes, this is, so like, like there's bathrooms on, on page, on page fifty-five and there's also, I think bathrooms, proposed right off of the council chambers.
There's existing ones off the council chambers.
Yeah, both, both sets are existing. It, when this was an office building, I think that's why it looks like there's a, a hallway like Was said. But in, you all are talking about it is, this, if the city offices goes there, it's a change of a use i- in, in, in adapting or re-adapting the existing footprint.
I mean, I think also there's those two rooms in front of them. I mean, there's a buffer. It's not, and people get up and move around in meetings. I mean, it, it's just.
Right, right. I just didn't know. I mean, there were restrooms in such close proximity to each other. They seem kind of redundant, but then if we're delineating the space that way, I didn't know if there was a way to further, move, you know, somehow repurpose the ones that are sort of in the council chambers. Maybe there's, there's probably a cost to that where you just leave it the way they are versus, you know, decommissioning them and then having people use the other ones and moving the, like locked entrance to unit one hundred further. Maybe that's just not possible. Anyway, it's.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I think anything's possible for the, the right price. It, it, it can also be something where, you know, we, we, we move in, see, see how it functions. And then if we find, if we, you know, don't think that we need them or, you know, it would make sense to repurpose, um, one or the other set, then, you know, we could always, always plan to do that.
Right. My only random thought.
I say, and I know one of the things that we talked at some length with them about where you see next to, in, in the one hundred suite on page fifty-five, is that secure storage.
Right, right, right.
Not to say that can't be moved somewhere else, but that was a, a real important thing to us. And that's where we ended up putting it.
Yeah, I mean, it seems nice how they did it with that conference room. I'm still on the page fifty-five moving. Cause I wonder the same thing. Two people are gonna walk in the big area. That's kind of what they had treated as reception, but it seemed like it was way out there and, then, then the person who's sitting out there is just gonna be out there on their own. You know, so this seems more cohesive.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really interesting how, how they fit, um, like a, a reception desk in, in that, in that space.
Right, right. Yeah, so I guess right now, I mean, those are details that are less of budget implications and more just I wanted to respond to those drawings.
No, I think all questions and count, conversation about stuff is good, Jamie.
Looks like Paul, Paul has stand up.
Oh, go ahead, Paul. Yeah, jump in.
Oh, uh, either on, uh, let's just deal with page fifty, fifty-eight, song fifty, seven as well. Well, the two council chamber designs, okay? Am, am I forgetting that, uh, that the, the one, they're putting a new wall up across, both of those areas behind the chamber, table. That's a new wall back there and.
So on, 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 on page fifty-seven, um, that, 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 those blue lines that you're, that you're looking at, where, for the walls. Um, th- those are all existing. Um, but the, the, if you'll remember, there's, um, there's a wall that, that currently continues out and like would, would go through, that would split the, the council dais in, 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 in this, in this picture on page fifty-seven. Now, the wall, the wall, the existing wall is actually longer and, and goes to, goes towards, you know, like where it says AV room and, and where the public sits. So that they're proposing to cut that back, but keep a, a kind of a divider. Um, so that way you can store chairs around that north side, that we can start tables and stuff.
Okay, if, if that's, this is a goal, I think it's a wasted space. If you merely took, the, and that, I think the, the dotted line is a metal, countertop. If you, if you just flip that ninety degrees, move that wall back, it will eliminate that one wall behind the council chambers. Um, then you would have, pick up quite a few extras. Square footage there for your council chambers to, you had a bigger room. I made a bigger meeting. And it wouldn't, wouldn't modify anything at all as far as the structure because, as I remember, those didn't, didn't go to the ceiling anyway. They were just half walls. Correct?
Yeah, that, that, and, and, you know, that, that's, that may be entirely possible. I, I, I know the, the way David talked about it was, um, to, to be able to provide like kind of hidden, storage for tables and chairs and stuff when they're not.
So is the room that's behind, the, uh, that area, the one that's closed off.
Yeah, that, that, that electrical room.
Yeah. Is that not big enough to store some chairs?
It could, could be.
It, it's big enough, Paul. I looked in it today because they wanted to show us there's a small shelving unit that's behind the, the door. As the door opens, it's to, on the left wall as you're looking at that. It's, it's probably big enough that you could store, if you had stackable chairs, you could have one stack of chairs in there. But you, you know, you, because the electrical panel and some of that stuff is there, you, you wouldn't wanna.
Screw around with it.
Well, you, you know, you wanna, you wanna have access to it. Let me say it that way. They have all movable stuff. I think they have like their, waste management recycling container in there. Now that could just be where it is today, but.
Anyway.
All right. I was just looking, when I was out there, a couple of times I was there, it looked to me like there was just a wasted area there behind, there that we could generate into bigger space for the council rooms, but maybe it's not possible we can do that.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think the plan is, is to, to take that kind of half wall from where it is and, and cut it back, uh, quite a bit.
Okay. That would be, where, where that dot is be in front of the, council cha- table there is every some of that dot that's there between that and that big square. And that's when I see a dot on my picture anyway.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know if that's where it started or if that's, I, I, that, that might just be one of the existing.
There's a column.
Post.
Yeah, I think it's the pillar.
There's a column that that wall is built around, Paul, right there at the T.
Yes, I, yes, I know that. That's why I said, it'd be fit there without, interfering with the tables. You know, you wouldn't be looking straight at the first, first, you'd be back further enough that people sitting in the front, a couple of rows wouldn't be blocked from looking at you if you moved it back, the table back. That's what I was thinking of. Okay, I think I've answered, you've answered the question.
Yeah, and I think, I think the other thing that's good about this is, you know, I mean, let's, I'm trying to think down the road a little bit, but you know, we're not, there's no decision, on how this absolutely would, would change today or even tomorrow. Th- these are meant to be concepts of how we could modify the use from today for our purpose tomorrow and certainly, you know, Paul, if, if you had an, an idea and, and, and it wasn't conveyed tonight, you know, at the point in time that you, that if, if we got the building, you know, we could all meet over there and, and talk about it together if we wanted to, you know? You know, it's, there's, there's room for that, but thi- this is an exercise, I think, that's intended to try and put some dollars, to, to, to openly acknowledge that there's dollars that need to be spent to convert the room a little bit and they need to, to base it on something. So they've, they've done a couple of concepts in order to put dollars in that lineup.
I guess, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and, 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 and part of this is also a test we're set to make sure that, you know, things can go where, you know, we hope they, they're able to go and, you know, does, does the council chamber the right size and, those sorts of things.
Do you have a point? What was the capacity at the senior center for, uh, attendees? Does anybody know?
Oh, probably quite a few, Jamie. I don't know if there was a legal, I don't know if there was like a legal number, you know, like a building would say there's a, I don't know what that is, but I, I'll bet you you could fit.
Sixty, seventy?
Yeah, I was gonna say seventy-five, eighty, probably depending on how we laid the chairs out, you know, how tight we put them.
Cause I'm trying to remember if you usually set up more than, cause I'm looking at that, you know, five rows versus four rows of four and it seems, you maybe had more than four across and maybe more than even five. Maybe you had five deep and five across on each side. I don't know.
Yeah, and I think, you know, you know, when I look at the layout, I'm looking at page, uh, fifty-eight. Yeah, the, the horizontal one. You know, you, you could, you could easily, I think, put those tables on the left in a different configuration and, and add, somehow add, uh, add chairs there, I think, you know, to those rows. They could be five wide or maybe even six on the one side.
Yeah, I mean, I, both of them, um, David noted, uh, sixty-plus capacity.
And, and some people, some people in the meetings, have a table for staff. Like we, we often, if, if, Jamie, you didn't get to see it, well, you saw it, I guess. We, we had our staff sitting at a table, you know, that what, what's not shown here is maybe a table that's over to the left for, you know, Dan and Marie or Mike or Michelle to sit at separate from the.
Blue Marcus?
Well, that, I thought that was the podium.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was taking it as without.
Okay, I didn't even think of that.
But, but I mean, we, you know, there, there's, there's likely gonna be another table in both of those configurations, I think, that we would want to incorporate maybe, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the world's kind of our oyster at that point.
Okay, well, let, let's keep going unless others have comments on it. Should we jump over the streets?
Okay, on page fifty-eight though, does anybody else see a smile?
Yes.
Okay, at least I'm not alone.
Does that seem to have a, a naturally optimistic disposition? Maybe you see the glass half full.
Yeah.
All right, so streets. So I, I did provide a copy of the Streets Fund Account Activity and Projection, um, spreadsheet. And, and you've seen this a, a few times in, in, uh, at different times. But the idea to, in providing this is just to kind of get a feel for the layout of how projects, could and may fall in, in the next couple of fiscal years. Um, I was talking with, with Patrick and Marcus from OHM and it's looking like, and, and, and we talked about this a little bit on Monday. Um, that Third and Broad is likely a next year project rather than a this year project, because of, um, complications and in communication with the railroad and, and, and on behalf of the railroad. Um, in talking with them, they indicated that they thought that they could get a jump on, uh, the Dexter Crossing roadwork and that we could still get that complete this year. And so kind of what I've laid out on pages sixty-five and sixty-six is what, what that looks like, so. What could happen is, you know, between now and the end of the fiscal year, um, OHM completes basically the, the design for Dexter Crossing. And then as of July one, we can start roadwork on Dexter Crossing and have that complete by the end of the calendar year. And then, um, starting in spring of twenty-two, um, assuming we get and also want to spend the American Recovery Act funds, um, we could potentially do Second Street in the spring of twenty-two. And the sidewalk portion of that work, um, would likely come out of, out of our streets funds. Then a little later in the, in the fist, in, in, in the calendar year, um, after July one, um, we could start construction on Third and Broad. Which was planned for this year, but is getting pushed back.
That's July one of twenty twenty-two.
To, to twenty twenty-two, July of twenty twenty-two, correct? I, I, I don't know how, how everyone feels about, about that layout and that, how those things could, could work together.
I'm good with moving, moving up the Dexter Crossing streets.
I know people in the subdivision would be happy about that. I just ran into Mr. Murphy the other day. He walked down my circle.
I, 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 I think Mr. Murphy would jump for joy.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I believe it's a good idea uh, because it's going to be very difficult to try to do three projects actually. I think it's a good move for, for one of these projects, if we can possibly do it this year, it would, it would make, uh, the day-to-day stuff a lot easier. I, I think three projects would be a lot.
And so, oh, sorry, go, go ahead.
Justin, on the, on the, um, the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year that we're in now, there's a couple of numbers that are estimated. What, what's the status of, of the Central Street final payment? Is that just something that we know we owe to MDOT or do, do you know that at all? Or I see there's a, it says thirty-five thousand, I think, and then?
Yeah, so, so, so I think Central Street is closed out if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I, I, I also see, oh, Grand, Grand Street Hudson Street. I think that's closed out as well. So there's, um, that, that's no longer an estimate.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Welcome. Um, but you, you can see in, in these projections that it looks like we do have, have enough funding to be able to, to do those projects in that order. Um, but I, I think that we would want to pull together a, a, a Streets Committee meeting, not necessarily immediately, but at some point um, this year to talk about what happens in, um, twenty-three and beyond. Um, to, to start working on kind of the next five years or, or the, the next projects that we want to, want to start planning for. Um, and I think, I think we, we, we have a pretty good base, um, you know, between our DPW and Dan and, um, OHM on, you know, some ideas of, of what could come next, um, kind of based on, um, our Pazer ratings. But I, I think we'll pull in together a committee meeting to, to discuss those in, in more detail and kind of get that plan going for twenty-three and beyond would be smart. Uh, because we, we, we are going to have, um, uh, a tip application due, and I think that covers twenty-three to twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six.
What is CDBG sidewalk ramp? Did you say that, what that was already? The CDBG, what does that stand for?
Uh, so CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. Um, and, and Michelle, I don't know if you, if you want to talk about the, the program a little bit since that's it's, it's your real house.
Thanks, Justin. So the, the Community Development Block Grant Program, excuse me, is set up to, um, allow communities to invest in, um, low to moderate income neighborhoods, areas within their communities. Uh, in our case, we no longer have any areas that qualify based on, um, how HUD HUD's formulas designate. But we are still entitled to CDBG funding. So while we don't have those low to moderate income areas um, in a, in a concentrated mass to be eligible, um, that way, we can do things that improve, um, the community in respect to meeting ADA guidelines, improving, um, um, blight and, and things like that. Um, so our, our sidewalk program, we're starting it, um, this year. We combined three fiscal years of funding in order to have enough money to do a couple of different intersections and fix those, those sidewalk ramps so that they are ADA eligible, ADA compliant now.
And, and, and usually, um, you know, what we'll do like a, a sidewalk replacement project about every other year. And, and typically when we do a sidewalk replacement project, we'll also pick off a couple of, um, uh, sidewalk ramps, uh, to install the, the, you know, the red little bubbles at the end um, to make those ADA compliant, um, ramps. So that this, this, this grant funding is kind of helping us um, get a jump on some of the ones that we would otherwise have to do.
Thank you.
Anybody have any, any other questions or?
Justin, does, Justin, is, are there special bidding requirements for that? Because that's federal money?
Um, so, so O, OHM has, has put together the, the bid docs. Um, and so we, we, we were actually put, put it, putting it out.
Okay.
So, and I'm, I'm sure OHM is aware of many special.
Yeah, they're familiar with that. Okay, good. That's good that we've accumulated enough to spend some of it. That's good. So, Justin, for the twelfth, you know, two weeks, you'll have then the Street Fund budget that incorporates these in for the next two years, so to speak?
Correct, yeah. So, so, so my goal for the twelfth is to have everything else. So have streets, um, equipment replacement, uh, water sewer.
Okay. Great. Want to talk to us a little bit about the, um, solid waste and the tree replacement?
Sure. Um, so, uh, the, the tree replacement fund is probably the, the, the easiest fund that we have. Um, as it, uh, helps feed, uh, the general fund um, for our, uh, street tree program. And, uh, that, that fund was, um, developed and, and its vendors, this is my understanding, when, uh, the Cedars went in, um, they contributed a, a good amount of money towards, uh, the implementation of that fund. And so it, it doesn't necessarily have, um, a, a source of revenue on a consistent basis anymore. Um, but we are able to, to pull from those funds, um, to help feed our, our street tree replacement program. Um, and so typically we, we've been taking about eight thousand dollars from that fund every year um, to go into the general fund and, and offset those costs. The, the solid waste fund, um, funds our, uh, um, contract with waste management, uh, in addition to our, um, leaf pickup and brush chipping programs. And just recently, in, I think it was twenty-nineteen, we implemented um, the toter system, um, when we renewed our contract with waste management. So, uh, between that and a, a change to, and, and the significant changes that, that have been going on with, with recycling and, and, um, how much recycling costs to process and, and haul away. We had to up our, um, per resident, um, cost, uh, per month cost through our, our utility bill. Um, then I think it went from eighteen or eighteen-fifty up to twenty-five. Um, because it was, it was just a, such a significant cost. But I, I think that, that increase, um, will hold for at least another year. It, it, it'll allow us to, to not increase it from twenty-five, um, at least through fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. But we, we are still seeing four percent increases in our contract with waste management. So I do believe that in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, we're going to have to increase it by at least fif- fifty cents per, per resident per month. Does anyone have any questions there?
I don't want to be the one to tell, that tells the community, okay?
Oh, I'll, I'll break it to them.
Thank you. Thank you. I might have to be absent that night.
Oh, I.
So you said fifty percent, fifty cents? Or fifty percent?
Fifty cents.
Times per month?
Yeah, per, 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 per house per month.
So six dollars.
Six dollar increase. This is what he's projecting over a year from now.
Correct. So, so, um, we, we are projecting, or we are budgeting to, to use, um, fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. But we're projecting to contribute more in, into the fund balance, uh, this current fiscal year. So what we had budgeted to spend this fiscal year was less than, than we had planned, and what we took in was more than we had planned. So we're able to, to kind of ride that out through, through the next fiscal year.
Marie? Will use, um, online tax paying to, um, allow us to take that fee down a bit?
Can we take down the online tax paying fee down?
Yeah, were there enough people that, I thought it was high because not very many people used it.
No, it's because of the credit card fees, the, the credit card companies, it's the fees they charge.
Oh, I guess I remember you being at council and saying that. Okay, thank you.
Um, now there are, there are communities that absorb those fees, um, um, Grand Rapids has a pretty good framework to do that if council ever wants to explore absorbing some fees. I mean, there are communities that do that.
Julie told me.
Pardon?
They, Julie told me to say it.
Oh. Yeah.
Another thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, nobody, nobody really likes the fees, um.
I was a little surprised. I did it online because I was really hurrying and, um, I, I was a little surprised that, that it was.
So.
Remembered like sixteen or twenty-something and they were up there.
Yeah, if it's credit card or debit card, it, it is, it's, um, three and a half percent.
Well, I didn't know they would do PayPal because I have an account there and I certainly would.
Well, PayPal's the same, it's the same rate.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The only, the only time you get a break is if you do an electronic check or ACH.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But we absolutely can re, you know, revisit fee structures with them.
I don't know if that's, we'll see. If, if there are others that are concerned about it.
Oh, we, yeah, we get, we get concerns about it, you know, absolutely, but, um, not that many, but I think people just don't, if they, if they're concerned about it, they just don't use it that much, you know? I mean, really, when you talk about stuff like that, really it's like, what, what drives, what, what drives it for us? Do we want, do we want people? Do we want to push people more online? Well, then we need to make it maybe less expensive, but then if we do that, then we need to absorb, you know, fees, so.
Well, and, and, and in that case, I mean, it's, it's kind of a pick your poison, you know, do, do, are, are you paying the fees directly or are you paying more in your utility bill in order to cover the fees that we're absorbing?
Well, it makes me feel better if Dan's paying it than I am, so. Yeah, I kind of would go for that, yes.
Good on you.
But yeah, and I agree is right. If, if, if council ever wanted to explore, you know, us absorbing the fee, you know, we could, we can definitely look at that and come back with, with some information.
Okay.
Yeah, and part of, part of the problem with the fees too, Donna, and it's just, I don't know if it's just the way invoice cloud does things, because originally I had actually kind of negotiated lower fees. But then we found out that if somebody was on auto pay with a credit card, then there was a maximum that they could charge. And that maximum, I don't remember the amount now, but it fell into our average, um, utility bill range. And we didn't want the scenario where somebody was on auto pay with their credit card. And then it didn't pay at all, and then they're getting, you know, late fees or you know, we just, we just didn't want to go there. And so it was, you know, as Justin says, pick your poison and I felt that it was better just to go with the higher fee and, and not have a situation where someone was you know, messed up because their auto credit card didn't pay the whole bill.
Yeah. I appreciate that as somebody who doesn't pay attention to things a lot, because that would have been me.
Yeah. It would have been me as well. So, um, I got everything on auto pay because you know how they say the cobbler's child has no shoes? Well, I'm the kind of person that will forget to pay a bill if it's not on auto pay, so.
Well, what's everybody think? Any more questions on any of what's here or other topics?
I have one question. It's not a serious question, but what are the chances, Dan, that I could operate the backhoe? Because every time it drives by or goes by here, I'm like, oh, man, I gotta get on that thing.
As someone who has done it, it's.
Oh, I've done it. That's why I want it. I'm like.
Just, we'll just bump the insurance up a little bit.
Okay.
You know, actually, you could make it a fundraiser because I know, uh, a figure skating club had a fundraiser where you got to drive the Zamboni. So there you go. Get to drive the backhoe for a fundraiser for the city.
Now, would there be an age limit? Because our three-year-old son would.
We'll mount a car seat somewhere.
I, I, I was gonna say we could just do a, a big truck day with, uh, with just city vehicles.
I think they do that up at the library.
They, they do.
Yeah.
And I, and actually, we take it quick enough. I think the bucket truck's the coolest, but.
That was my second choice.
Don't you have to have a special license to go on that bucket?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We have one more substantive question. I'm not sure how it immediately impacts the budget, but we talked in the past about getting some sort of a summary document of sort of past discussions at the fire station. Um, I don't know if this is sounding familiar to anybody. I think Paul may have asked about it, sort of bringing people up to speed if I don't know how many pages it would be. I know it's a long conversation and, um, I don't, I don't know if that's on anybody's radar. It's been when that could, could get to us. I don't know how urgent it is, but just. You don't need it.
I don't, I don't. Nope, I've been through it. Um, I understand why you would want to have it. But as far as making our staff dig all that up and distribute, I don't think it's worth it. It's my opinion.
Okay.
So, so, so I, I, I do actually have, um, a number of file folders relating to, you know, the, the history of the facilities discussion, kind of sitting on, on my side table. So.
Well, I could, yeah, I mean, if other people are interested in it, I could think on it and think what my specific questions would be or what information I would be looking for and.
Yeah, and, and as far as the budget goes, that's that's nominal.
Right, right. Because, yeah, we talked about, I mean, last time, whether or not we wanted to put a placeholder in there for a, election, for a special election, I think, right? So, I think.
And, and, and I didn't know where, where we landed on that, so I, I didn't, um, I didn't include it, but.
Right.
That's, that's easy enough to add if, if that's council's desire.
Right. I don't, I haven't, I mean, I haven't spoken with Zach. I don't know if anybody has, but now that our videos are online, which I think is really great, thanks so much. Uh, I don't know if he will avail himself of that and just watch the videos at two in the morning or whenever and take notes, but that would be my recommendation to him, so I might shoot him an email.
I, I, I did actually forward him, um, the last meeting's recording link.
Okay, good.
And, and I'll probably do the same for, for this meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure he would have thoughts, so.
I guess in tune with that, Jamie, are we having any thoughts at all about having a public hearing about the purchase of the building in Broad Street? Are we just going to do it?
Well, I don't know if you meant to say public hearing or public meeting or what your thoughts are.
Public hearing, equal.
But, but I can tell you that, um, the feedback I hear is all positive. I've not heard anybody discourage us from doing it. Have you?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, I, there's some, but people questioned the amount of money. And what else the building would be used for? And if you set a goal or parameters for an amount of space and then you buy more, how do you deal with that? And how do you explain that to the public? I don't think anybody's got that idea yet. This building's thirteen thousand something square feet and we're using, what, eight thousand of it? I don't use anybody. It's well, there's some people that are because they pay attention, but a lot. well, there's some people that are because they pay attention, but a lot of them are, just like anything.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm, I'm not saying there aren't people out there that might question that, but I, I think that the, the majority of the people that I've run into are, are optimistic about what we're looking at. They get the idea that we need more storage space, i.e. that barn and you know, that the concept of having more than less is pretty easily understood, I think, out there. But.
One suggestion of combining, if we ended up doing a new, you know, all hypotheticals, if we did a new fire station at the Metta View, could we throw city offices on top of that? And I was trying to do some research. Are there other communities that have city offices on top of fire stations? And the closest I could come up, up, come up with is Disney's Cars that shows the, I think their courtroom is above the fire station. And they talk about the sirens interrupting the, the court, but anyways.
Well, so, um. So what was that, Donna?
I said Alma has theirs all combined. They have fire station, police and city offices all in one space. Not built on top of one another, but all in the same complex.
Yeah. So, so, you know, on or by, actually, well, on May, the May 24th meeting, May 24th, you know, okay, council is going to need to adopt a, a bond authorizing resolution to allow for the bond sale. One option could be to, to kind of go over and above in, in advertising that meeting to, to let, let people know that that, that vote's happening.
Well, keep in mind, we're put, it's been on every agenda in some one way, shape or form since we toured it. And it's gonna be on every agenda. We've announced that. So if there's people that have something to say, they should, they should say it.
John, that's good for you to say because you're engaged. A lot of people are.
I think it's also been in the Sun Times multiple times and the Dexter Guardian multiple times. I mean, it's, it's not just the packets.
Well, and Paul, what are they saying at the forum? I, the, the notes I've read or the, the comments I've heard from people that have attended, people aren't picking on our, aren't picking on what we're doing here?
No, because about 80% are from not from Dexter, Dexter.
Right.
Well, there's a lot of people that are not from Dexter that think this is a good idea that have, that are looking at us and have said, you guys have, you guys have, you know, been short of a permanent space for a long time.
I, there's somebody that disagrees with that, Sean.
Okay.
The question, the question is how much? Space do you need? Just because we found a building and it seems to meet our needs. It does. I'll admit that straight right out, okay? Question is, is there is an excess?
Isn't that what the information of the, of the little RFP or whatever we're calling it, request for information or request for interest that we're, that we just talked about Monday? I mean, isn't that gonna give us an idea of that? I mean, I, I still think it's prudent, if, if we were to go there, to actually figure out how much we need once we're in there. I mean, just because the architect picked the number doesn't necessarily mean that's the right number.
Exactly.
I mean, all, all buildings layout and operate differently, but you know, I, I think, I think that there's, this council has shown that if there's, if there's space that can be shared for the community, we're, we're seeking ideas and interest in that and, and that's to be evaluated.
Well, I haven't heard anybody jump up and down and say, I want to rent the space or lease the space. And maybe because they, we don't have it yet.
The letter has.
She don't interrupt me, okay?
I'm sorry. I just thought you were done. Go ahead.
And, and so I said, just because we were, have done that, doesn't mean that there are people out there that have had an opportunity to express themselves yet on this. You know, I, I can't remember decisions made in this unit of government that I've been in here since twice every time, but you know, over 35, five years have not said, you know, gee, this is something that we ought to have a public forum about, discuss it and get people's opinion. If I hear that, I, I feel better. Okay? I haven't heard that. We haven't provided that. And I don't know why.
Was that they, we haven't even sent that out, though. We haven't circulated any kind of survey asking for interest, have we?
We don't generally don't send a survey out on any of our things that we've ever done this year.
Well, I guess what I mean is I don't know what to call the draft that Justin did, but it was seeking interest from people and we, that hasn't gone out, has it?
It, it, my, my plan is to send it out tomorrow.
Okay, so we might get a lot, Paul, what we might get though is a lot of good information out of that. We can, you'll have to wait and see, I guess, but.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I think we also have to keep in mind too, that we started this meeting talking about the need for expansion of staff. And so that's part of this equation too. I mean, it's, the needs assessment was based on what we have in place now, right? And that's not adequate for where we are.
Actually, it was, I believe the original needs assessment was before we hired Mike.
True.
I believe you're correct.
Paul, I guess just what would that look like to you? I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, Justin's proposal of sort of over advertising or emphasizing. Are you envisioning something like we would actually make a brief presentation that has some of these specs, that has some of the renderings, some 10-minute presentation? We open up a public hearing at the beginning of a, of a regular council meeting. Is, is that, would that be sufficient? What do you, are, is there something else?
I think, I think that's a, that's a possibility. We can dedicate the whole, a, a, a Zoom meeting to just that, okay? And then have other discussions as we go along about the other areas, you know? I, I just don't, I just never seen it done this way in this community. And maybe we have, somebody has that, then we'll, I'll be glad to listen, but.
Well, Paul, we, we built, we built the whole DPW and we didn't have a public meeting for that.
That's another, that was another issue. I still, still feel we did, made a mistake in doing that. We spent six and a half million dollars of public dollars and didn't even have a hearing on it. Was it necessary? Absolutely.
No, 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 no. The, the DPW costs 1.3 million. Your numbers are.
I thought you were talking about the wastewater treatment plant or the, the sewer plant. We just updated. Sorry, I missed, I flipped, flipped switches there. Okay, yes. Maybe we should have. I don't know.
But, but those, those all have processes where they're advertised as part of, I mean, we, we have to advertise selling of the bonds and we have to go through all of that stuff. I mean, all of that stuff is advertised. That's the whole point of the referendum period and all this stuff. I mean, there, there's, it's, it's not like, it's not like what we're doing is not out in the open of anything. I, I mean, if, if there's a question.
I didn't, I didn't allude to that, John. What I said was, Sean, and I did, what I said was that I hadn't seen us do that. Well, maybe the DPW is an example of one, but the fact is, is that this is a, a, a big expenditures of money, probably twice as much as what you just said. I don't know, close, but I just thought that, you know, with, you have that expenditures, whether it's justified or not. Yeah, at least to let the people know that this is how it's done. And you can see, you know, you say that we advertise, we have public forums. You know, and, and I'll, and I will certainly admit, and there's no issues about this with me. It's very difficult. This COVID issue to do what we used to do in the past. I don't deny that at all. Okay.
Okay. And the other thoughts? Okay, I'll, I guess I'll jump back to, I know there's a couple of people, any, any thoughts under non-arranged participation before we adjourn?
And, and folks are able to unmute themselves.
Seeing none, then I guess we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody have a good week.
Good night.
You too.
Good night, everyone.